Delicious.
Delicious. Whoever picked chocolate?
Good shirts. Before, I introduce our presenter for the evening. I'd like to give a little background. There are a lot of challenges, fiscal challenges running around in the district. And we're trying to focus on teaching and learning at the same time having a nurturing, comfortable, and cost-effective environment for all our students. And one thing that we've done in other districts is to take advantage of legislation that allows schools to have what's called an energy performance contract. As it so happens, a dear friend of mine, a retired superintendent, who's taken the show on the road, is working with a really prominent engineering firm that is really top in the field and that manages these type of programs for school districts. So I'm really pleased to introduce Kendra McGolden this evening, one of the official executives with ECG. So Kendra, if you would kind of let me come up to the microphone. Kendra took a long drive from Long Island to come and see us.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Hilberg, very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to speak to you about a concept that has become incredibly popular among municipalities and school districts, particularly in the last several years, and that is energy performance contracting. And it's become so popular because it presents an innovative funding mechanism to allow school districts to move forward with sometimes millions of dollars' worth of capital construction out of your five-year plan at no additional cost to taxpayers, with zero taxpayer impact, because all costs associated with the project are paid for out of guaranteed energy savings that those improvements will yield. So it's really a great option for any economic climate, but particularly now with the tax cap in place, it offers a creative means to funding energy-related capital needs. So tonight, I'd just like to give you an overview of the concept and our service, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have along the way. As Mr. Hilberg mentioned, energy performance contracting is a concept that was established by the New York State Legislature in the form of New York State Energy Law, Article 9. So it is not just a concept that companies are promoting. There is actual legislation that governs the utilization of energy performance contracting in this state. And it provides an alternative funding mechanism for energy-related capital projects. It allows you to quickly identify energy-related, or rather, energy savings opportunities throughout all of the buildings, build out the improvements in order to gain the energy efficiencies and the cost savings, and all costs, hard and soft costs, must be paid for out of the guaranteed energy savings that those upgrades will yield. So in other words, if you move forward with a project and the savings are not there after year one, year two, year three, the company that you partnered with to make the upgrades must cut you a check for the difference. So throughout the entire process, there should be no out-of-pocket cost to the school district and no risk, because again, if the savings are not there, the company must cut you a check for the difference. Now, in a performance contract, we can't do any and all projects that we might like to. There are limitations within the statute. You can do any project that saves energy or generates energy, such as in the form of solar or wind energy. And these are just some of the examples of capital needs that you could potentially address through a performance contract here. And as you can see, it's not just lighting and motors and the typical obvious energy-saving measures, but rather a lot of heavy infrastructure that all school districts need, such as roofs and windows and things that are maybe seem more architectural in nature. They are still energy systems, and so if there are savings there to support the funding of those items, they could be potentially part of your project. And there actually are a few items that I did pull out specifically from the district's five-year plan as examples of projects that could be funded through a performance contract. These are projects that have been identified as needing to be funded theoretically at some point within the next five years. There are several unit ventilator replacements that are needed at several schools. There's those single-pane windows at South Avenue School. There are exterior hollow-metal doors at most of the schools. These are all projects from your five-year plan that could be considered. Now, in a performance contract, it's different from a traditional capital project in that in a traditional bond, you have an architect and a construction manager in various primes all working to coordinate their efforts. In a performance contract, you have one energy services company, or ESCO, that is responsible for delivering the entire project. The ESCO identifies the savings opportunities. They do a detailed energy audit. They determine the scope of work. They actually go on to build the project, so it's similar to a design-build type of a job. They train your staff on how to use the new equipment they install, and as I said, they do guarantee that the energy savings will cover all project costs. Now, under New York State law, what's interesting is that the energy services companies cannot do the engineering design that's required for the project in-house. They must sub that out to a licensed third-party engineering firm. So when a district pre-selects a company such as ECG Engineering or another consultant of that nature, what you're doing is you are taking control of the entire process through your engineers, who are representing you, and not only doing the design of the project, but also guiding you every step of the way through every single decision in every phase of the project, and giving you that technical advice to help you make decisions and mold the project. For the same amount that you would ultimately be charged by the ESCO anyway if you decided to issue an RFP by yourselves, because again, that ESCO must charge the project X percent for engineering design. So that's just sort of how ECG Engineering fits into the picture. There are a few unique aspects to energy performance contracting that I just wanted to highlight quickly. The project must pay for itself in 18 years or less under the law. So what that means is the project cannot simply be a mix of roofs and windows and boilers. All of those items can be in a project, but they have very long return on investment periods. A boiler or windows can be 30, 50, 100 years to pay for itself, because the upfront cost is so high as compared to the annual energy savings that that type of a system will yield. So a project has to be a mix of what are called quick payback measures, which are things like lighting and energy management systems, temperature controls. These things pay for themselves in 18 years or less. And then you bundle those items with some of the longer capital needs that you have that are discretionary, like a set of windows in a school or like a roof, because the aggregate return on investment for the entire project scope has got to be 18 years or less. So it does limit you somewhat, and that'll all be investigated as you move through the process to see how much capital you actually can support here. As I've been saying, it's guaranteed savings. Okay? So there's a great degree of accountability here, which is unique in itself, in that the ESCO is on the hook to produce those energy savings. If they don't materialize, they've got a problem here. They're a professional services company that needs you as a good reference, and we have found in the 70 projects that we've been a part of, that all of the projects are exceeding their savings guarantee. But what goes hand-in-hand with the guaranteed savings is guaranteed performance. If the systems that the ESCO installs are not performing correctly, they're not, and you are not going to see the energy savings. And so it's in the ESCO's best interest to ensure that all the equipment remains fully functional for the term of the project. All the risk is shifted to the ESCO as well. The ESCO must fully develop the project scope and the entire project and front the engineering fees to design the project. And if there are any changes, if there are any unforeseen conditions that arise in the construction phase, they cannot come back to you for change orders. It's a fixed-price contract. So you don't ever have to be worrying about, oh, what if they didn't, what if they missed this, what if they missed that? They have to do all their due diligence upfront, which is very nice from a budgeting or a financial point of view. You're not going to have to worry about overruns and things like that that may occur on a regular project. Another interesting aspect is there is no Wicks Law that's applicable to performance contracts. It's one of the more onerous mandates facing local governments that requires you to separately bid and award plumbing, HVAC, and electrical contracts on a regular bond. That is not applicable here. So you don't have the burden of those tasks and the associated costs with doing that in this type of a project. And again, as I've been saying, it's a turnkey service. So you don't have the finger pointing that you may have on a regular project or low bidders. You've got one professional services company that must make you happy at the end of the day to win the next job, and we find on project after project, it's very smooth. It's like night and day with a regular capital project in that regard. Really quickly on how the EPCs are typically financed. It's typically done through a tax-exempt municipal lease, and that is not secured until after we receive SED approval. So that might be a year from now that we even have to start thinking about the financing. And up until that point, the district is not laying out a penny to the engineers, the ESCO, or anyone. All of those costs to develop and design the project are absorbed and fronted by the energy services company on your behalf. The way that it works so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the school district is that once we select a bank, say you have a $5 million project here, $5 million will go into an ESCO account to fund the construction. And the ESCO that you select will ask for you to pay them incremental amounts as the construction project progresses, that we would sign off on and verify and agree to. At the end of the construction project, if all the equipment is in place and you're satisfied, the ESCO has then received the full $5 million. And we typically do not start paying back the lease until a full year after the project is completely built out, so that by the end of that first year, you have that year's worth of guaranteed energy savings accrued in the bank and there to, at minimum, cover that first lease payment. And all of that will be reconciled in detail at the end of that first year. All the savings will be quantified and measured, and that will happen every year of the term of the project. So in a nutshell, that's the way we typically structure it. It doesn't have to be structured that way, but it allows the district the ample amount of time to let the savings accrue, so that you are always paying for the project in arrears after the savings have been verified. You're never fronting money and then waiting or hoping that it reconciles and you get it back at a later date. You are always saving the money first before you pay it out. Many districts are considering performance contracting now for a lot of different reasons, but the major reason is that every school district has a five-year plan. You must update it every year, and every year it usually gets longer. And with the limitations now financially, districts are facing a mounting list of capital needs that unless they start to chip away at it, you know, the end result is a larger bond issue potentially down the road, or just equipment that might fail in the meantime, and then you have emergency situations and so forth. So in order to maintain the facilities, this offers a creative way to fund some serious capital during this economic time and do so with no tax increase, because really, the way I like to boil this entire concept down is, say your district spends about a million. Your district spends about $700,000 a year in energy, but call it a million, just for example's sake. You're going to continue to spend a million dollars a year in energy, whether you do this project or not, plus increases as the cost of energy goes up. When you do a performance contract, we typically reduce that annual energy spend from anywhere from 20% to 40%, because it is a laser-focused, comprehensive look at energy systems and a full upgrade. And so what you're doing after you do a performance contract is you no longer are spending a million. Your costs have gone down to, say, $750,000, because you have the new efficient equipment installed. You take that $250,000, which is the savings, and that simply gets redeployed and reinvested into the district to pay off the project. So you're just taking a portion of what you're already budgeting and spending and reallocating it to pay for the project and get all that great new equipment in to your school buildings. Another important point, just from a financial perspective, is that these projects present a really special opportunity to create a positive cash flow in many situations. What's unique about the aid structure on energy performance contracts is that all of the principal costs must be paid for out of guaranteed energy savings, yet you will still receive state building aid for the project. Now, you typically get 60% or 64.2%. In an energy performance contract, you would get 54.2% building aid because of the nature of the contract. It's just a different type of mechanism. And so you would get that building aid, and the only thing you can use that building aid to pay for is interest on the lease. That's the only thing it can go to pay for. It cannot be spent on subsidizing the project in any other way. So what happens is that once the interest on the lease is satisfied, whatever additional building aid comes down from the state is a positive cash flow to the school district. Again, all the other costs must be paid for at a guaranteed energy savings. So it's an interesting arrangement. It's very different, but it does produce an opportunity to essentially generate income for the school district, just for doing the project. Just some quick background on ECG Engineering. This is all that we do. It's our only service is helping school districts through the energy performance contracting process. We've been doing it for about 10 years. We have 70 school districts that we have or are currently working with in various stages of the process, and those projects have generated over $700 million worth of energy performance contracting projects. And what's also important is that we have over 20 projects that, if you are skeptical or if this is new or if you're not sure about this, we can show you 20 completed projects that we manage and implemented our model at. And those projects are exceeding the savings guarantee in every case. And on average, our projects exceed the savings guarantee by 15%. So we can prove to you that the savings are there on our projects. We have been successful. We know we'll be successful here at Beacon if given the opportunity to proceed, and we can show you that proven track record that our projects really are producing the And just really quickly, the process and where we fit in. The first thing that we typically do and what we have done for your school district is perform a preliminary energy assessment, and this is really just a look at what is your district spending and consuming in energy per square foot of building space, per building. And when we do that comparison, it comes up with each building gets an energy intensity score, and it tells us, is this building operating very inefficient, efficient, moderately efficient, and so on and so forth? And from those scores, we're able to determine how much savings could be generated through this process. If you're very efficient across the board, there may not even be an opportunity here. If you're very inefficient, on the other hand, there's more opportunity. Now, the scores at this district were very good, so whatever you've been doing to hold down energy costs, whether it be behaviorally or controlling the systems, you've been doing a very good job. But there was still some opportunity that we saw to improve and build upon that, and so we did determine that there is about a $2 million, very, on the very conservative side, performance contracting process, project here. Okay? We're very conservative in that estimate. A lot of times, if we move to the next step, which would be to issue an RFP to the ESCOs, that project would probably come in in the $4 to $5 million range. I hate to even throw out those numbers at this point, but what we want to do is stay on the conservative side so that the project continues to get bigger and better as we go through the process. So we have determined that you are a candidate for a performance contract. The next step would be if you wanted to allow us to issue an RFP to the ESCOs, and that is a very enlightening process in that you will get three to four competitive detailed energy audits essentially from competing firms, looking for every penny of energy savings that they can find, because the key in the RFP process is for each company to try to build the biggest project. Who has the most techniques that they're aware of and found the most applications throughout your buildings to save energy? And that's the result of the RFP process. That's when you'll have a site-specific scope, or a better sense of the scope of work and the actual size of the project. From there, we would evaluate the proposals from a technical and financial perspective to make sure the district's getting value for the energy savings and that it's very clear and understood what's being received, what benefit is being received. And then from there, the ESCO will refine the scope of work. The point there is really that when the proposals come in and those scopes come in, nothing's carved in stone. You then have an opportunity, once you select a winning ESCO, to refine the scope of work. Maybe they put solar in their scope, and you really don't care for that, or you'd rather have something else. It's an opportunity to mold the scope of work to one that you're ultimately completely comfortable with. And then from there, it generally follows the same process as a typical project. We would sign a contract with the ESCO. We would design the project, send it to SED for approval. We would help with the financing, and then once the financing was in place, the ESCO would begin the construction. And then finally, for every year of the contract after that, the ESCO must come back and monitor and verify the savings to ensure that they are, that guarantee is being met, and we review that as well. Just included two local case studies, just to show you where this concept is being successfully implemented, and Mr. Hilberg has personal experience also with previous districts. But you know, at Wappingers, we're currently building out an $11 million project there. This was a district that had a very difficult time getting funding for capital projects and had serious needs with windows almost literally falling out of the buildings, and we were able to address many of those needs, including several boilers, which were 70-plus years old, that were almost in an emergency state. So this project really kind of served as a lifeline to this school district in terms of a facilities point of view. And then I also chose Spack and Kill, which is in Poughkeepsie, and they're doing a smaller-sized project, but they're also getting a lot of upgrades that they needed. They had temperature control issues that they couldn't seem to rectify any other way, and this is going to get them up to state-of-the-art equipment in that regard, plus check off a lot of other items they had on their five-year plan. And then these are just some other local projects, just to show you that this may be a new concept to Beacon, but rest assured, this is not a new concept. It's being done. It's something that, you know, you can talk to a lot of other districts about and get their take on how they felt the process worked. So as I mentioned before, activity to date is that we have been granted the opportunity, which we appreciate very much, to do a preliminary look at the numbers here, and they do reveal a minimum $2 million energy performance contracting opportunity. And then if you were interested in exploring this further, the next step would be to consider allowing an RFP to go out to the energy services companies. There is no cost, risk, or obligation in taking that action. And what it will do is bring you in approximately two to three months, it clearly defines scope of work that's possible here with your five-year plan priorities addressed, and give you that overall guaranteed savings number, that it'll make the project opportunity more tangible at that point, and you could make decisions from there. Okay. So thank you very much.
Well, Kendra, I appreciate that. That's a great presentation.
Thank you.
As you said, I do have experience in Wappingers. I know Ron Bros. We worked together in another district. I think you've had some pretty nice districts. And Ron is excited about, you know, continuing this project, as you said, they really need it. To the board members, I know the board has many accolades, and that's because you take your job very seriously. One of your jobs is to protect the investment the community makes in all our facilities, and this is a way for us to do that in a green way, an energy conservation way, with no cost to the taxpayers, and actually, as we might have mentioned before, with a positive cash flow. So we were very excited to have Kendra come and present that, and Kendra will be discussing this, and we will get back to you about moving ahead, I hope, with the RFPs. Some of the ESCOs I've worked with in the past, and what you said is absolutely true, districts that really couldn't afford to replace the unit ventilators, the windows he removes in some instances, I really had a chance to upgrade their facilities. It was really a wonderful, so I hope to see you again soon. Thank you so much. Does the board have any other questions, comments?
Couple of questions. No one else does? The lease, as a way of funding, is that just leasing the equipment that's going to be installed?
Yes. It's just the mechanism that they use, because really what we're doing is we're taking the, we're working within your operating, your current operating budget.
About the construction, most of that, are they also included in there?
Yes.
Who establishes the baseline for determining the future cost savings, and who does the measurements?
Great question. The baseline is something that we, as a company, spend time speaking with the district administrators about, because one of the things that can sometimes distort a project is if you start with too high of a baseline. If you start with, if we did a project where oil was, you know, $4 a gallon and you used that number, well, you know, prices go down, they go up, they're volatile. So we like to err on the side of conservatism when we set up the initial baseline. And then we do allow for 3% energy escalation year over year. Again, that's a conservative number, but that's something that we would still talk to you about and determine what your comfort level is, and we can adjust those numbers.
And the ESCO, since technically they could have a financial obligation to the district if they have to cut a check, is there any sort of guarantee if they can't fulfill on that?
There is an option to take out additional insurance on the project to, if the ESCO did, for example, go out of business, let's say. The way we like to look at it is really, after the construction is complete, and that first year is the critical year when it comes to the energy savings, if at the end of that first year, you have the savings and all the equipment is functioning, the project in essence worked, okay? And we should be able to look at it from that point and really agree to that. And if you're getting the savings year two, year three, even further, it's really up to the district at that point to maintain the equipment, just as you would if it were funded through any other means, through a bond or what have you. So it's something that, again, we'll talk about, what your comfort level is in terms of the guarantee, but we feel that, you know, at the end of the day, you're still going to have that efficient equipment regardless of what happens to the ESCO, and that even if that were to happen, you know, if the savings have been there, they should persist as long as the district is holding up its end.
And who does the analysis to determine if leasing the equipment plus the interest rates and that, without the benefit of, say, state aid on that, is a better value than a more upfront, you know, purchase, but being reduced by the state aid?
That's something that if you wanted to look at different cash flow scenarios, that we could make that a requirement within the project to have the ESCOs run those different cash models, if that is. cash models, if that answers your question.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Bill, for asking some of them. Who does the savings projection? Is it you or the ESCO?
The ESCO does that.
So we, as a board, would not be able to see tentative projections until we were accepting one of the RFPs. So it could conceivably be three to six months from now, if we agreed to send out the RFPs, before we would see any projections.
Right. The ESCOs, we'll typically give them two months to respond, so from whatever the date we issue the RFP.
Okay. So the numbers that you provided us with are based on your experience with the ESCOs that you've dealt with?
It's only based on the numbers. And again, we're super conservative, because we're not doing a detailed energy audit as the ESCOs will do. But the first thing, if we weren't here and weren't involved at all in the district, put out an RFP, the first thing the ESCOs are going to do to decide whether or not they want to respond to the RFP is what we just did in that preliminary audit. And it's really just basic benchmarking using EPA models to determine the general level of efficiency of every building as compared to your peers of educational buildings in this particular region. And it is, it has been a good benchmarking tool to determine the approximate minimum size of the opportunity. And really, we're just trying to determine what exists here. Where do you stand from an efficiency point of view? And, you know, again, the projects that we do, they typically range in the 30% reduction. So in our report, we're calling it 19% reduction off of what's currently being spent here. So we feel the project will be comfortably above that estimate. But generally, no project that we've done has been a reduction of less than 19%.
Do you have any districts that do not benefit from positive cash flow after state aid?
Yeah, sure, we do.
Now, this is, I'm going to stop you for a second. This is where, I was sitting here, and as you were talking about, you know, talking about the state building aid of 54.2% for the project. Between the state aid and the energy savings, I cannot figure out how you cannot have positive cash flow. So why wouldn't you come up with positive cash flow?
Yes. In some instances where we have a district, like White Plains, for example, they don't get any aid. So in that case, the energy savings had to cover the interest costs. Because the district cannot be out of pocket, cannot be digging into your coffers to fund any portion of this. So in a situation like that, they really didn't have, I mean, every, I should rephrase that. Every district has some level of positive cash flow, because you can't, you can't put every single penny of energy savings back into capital. It just doesn't work out that way. So there will be some, but it does vary. And a lot of that depends on how much building aid the district gets.
Okay. So then, just to clarify, a district like ours that gets better than 50% state aid would benefit and see positive cash?
Absolutely correct.
That's really what I was looking for.
Yes, yes.
That, to me, is more important than anything.
Okay.
I got one more question. Who dictates, in terms of RFP processes, according to state law, what costs are actually included? You know, because, I mean, when you're measuring the cost savings, I'm assuming there's certain possible expenses that are offsetting against that. If, for example, you have to hire more trained personnel and require higher salaries, for example, because of specialized equipment that we've never had before, are those kind of costs and things like that included as offsets against the actual energy savings?
That's a great question. We really don't see the hiring of additional personnel coming into play, but for example, say we switch out steam traps throughout the entire school district. Well, they have a useful, they're going to have to get replaced midway through the term of the project, say maybe after 10 years, for example. The ESCO has to quantify the cost of that replacement midway through the term of the project and build that in, so the district is covered. So you're not all of a sudden, oh my gosh, now we have to come up with all this money to keep the savings going. So that's just one example of, yes, there are all kinds of things that are considered a factor then upfront.
Things such as if, if I was looking at, for example, like if this solar panel, if you put those up the roof, and you have to replace the roof before the solar panel light is up, the roof replacement can be a lot more complicated now, so things like that. Are those taken through now?
Yes. That's something that we really, a lot, instances like that, particularly with solar, you know, nobody's going to put the solar up there. They have to determine, and we all have to agree. I mean, the district has to sign off on the scope. So we all have to come together and consider those types of issues, yes. They can build in operations and maintenance savings. For example, if we replace all the light bulbs in the district, you are going to get a reprieve of a few years of not having to buy or install new light bulbs. That savings on the other side of what your question is that are also allowed to be built in.
And as far as, when it comes time to national lease agreement, I mean, how well broken out are the various items in the lease in terms of, you know, what's the actual cost of the equipment versus the interest and things like that? Is that all broken out, so we can evaluate, you know, make sure that what we're being charged for the equipment is what, you know, what the market would only bear, as opposed to inflated and, you know, things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of detail that comes out through, not only the RFP, but really when the ESCO gets into the comprehensive energy audit, that you get a lot of detail about costing. And we are reviewing all of the costing to make sure it's in line with other projects.
Does your firm ever act as an ESCO, or are you strictly?
No. No, we're strictly an engineering company.
Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Motion for executive session. A motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular person, and the board will return as soon as possible. Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board will return as quickly as possible.